From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Okay, board to reconvene. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scribner. Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Tuesday, June 8th, 2:00 PM meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We'll first hear from County Council Margot Raison for a report taken on actions in closed session.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. This morning, you met in closed session on items 58, 59, and 60, and there is no reportable action.
Thank you. We're pleased to welcome members of the public back into board chambers with available seating for up to 65 attendees at this time. While limited seating is available, the current public comment protocols remain in place, so testimony and general public comment are still accepted via email or voice message to the clerk of the board prior to today's meeting, and live comments via teleconference will be heard during the meeting. We'll begin by considering the consent agenda. All items listed with a CA above the items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the public wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in a listed sequence, with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. A member of the public may also comment on any closed-session item. At this time, I'll read the consent agenda item numbers, and that is items 3 through 5 on Page 2, 6 through 10 on Page 3, 11 and 13 on Page 4, 15 through 18 on Page 5, 19 through 25 on Page 6, 26 through 34 on Page 7, 35 through 41 on Page 8, 42 through 48 on Page 9, and 49 through 53 on Page 10. I would also like to note that Item Number 10, Proposed Hearing on Confirmation of Costs Incurred for Nuisance Abatement Work Located at Nile Street, is supposed to read APN And lastly, Item Number 12 has been withdrawn by staff and will not be heard today. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody wishing to speak to the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you did receive yesterday by email a letter from Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability related to Item Number 35 under the County Administrative Office. This is a letter urging the board to not oppose Assembly Bill 339, and that correspondence is also in front of you at the dais. I have no other comments regarding consent agenda items.
Okay, thank you. Are there any members of the audience that would like to speak on the consent agenda?
My name is Emma De La Rosa. I hope you all had a good lunch. I just want to just read a little bit of what was emailed to you, just in case you haven't had the chance to read through it. But basically, we are asking the board to reject a resolution to officially oppose AB 339, especially since the majority of the opposition arguments reflect the fundamental misunderstanding of the bill's requirements. As it appears in print, AB 339 does not require governments to provide Zoom or any two-way audiovisual option for remote participation. Many of the staff's arguments against AB 339 included concerns about Zoom bombing and the inflexibility of requiring teleconferencing. As video teleconferencing is no longer required under AB 339, the board's vote in opposition of AB 339 was based on factually incorrect arguments about the bill. Secondly, the Board of Supervisors is currently meeting in person but providing the television livestream and a two-way call-in option. This is in compliance with AB 339. The board would not have to change any of its policies or practices to comply with AB 339 should it pass. Furthermore, because of both the feasibility and the benefits of these practices, we urge the board to keep them in place once in-person participation expands. Remote technology options allow people for whom in-person travel is difficult to participate in the governmental decision-making processes. I'm thinking about Ridgecrest, Caliente, Tehachapi, Lake Isabella. You know, Lake Isabella is an area with a lot of needs and are not able to come to the Board of Supervisor meetings. And this also includes people with mobility issues or disabilities, working folks who can't afford to take the time off in the middle of the workday to make the meetings. Moreover, the County Board of Supervisor has already implemented these reforms over the past year. To oppose a policy that the board has already implemented, that the board knows is both feasible and beneficial, is ridiculous and undermines values of governmental transparency for accountability. And accountability, I'm sorry. For these reasons, because AB 339 protects the public's ability to participate in government, because the board is already in compliance with AB 339, and because many of the arguments in opposition to AB 339 are factually incorrect, I strongly urge the board to reject a resolution to formally oppose AB 339. A vote in opposition of AB 339 is a vote in opposition of open, transparent, and accountable government. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on consent?
Good afternoon, staff, members of the board. My name is Josh Taylor. I'm a representative for the more than 1,000 local union carpenters here in Kern County. I'm here to speak on Items 36 and 38 of the consent agenda. Notably, water is vital to the sustainability of businesses and residents in Kern County, and well-paying jobs are crucial to the economic sustainability of Kern residents. Therefore, the approval of Items 36 and 38 would help on both fronts, and therefore, I would ask the board to vote in support of staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak to the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, are there any items a board member would like removed for discussion? Okay, seeing none, I would...
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes, sir. Supervisor Couch.
Mr. Alsop, I don't know who in your staff is... Is it Thomas Brown that's the legislative analyst? Would anybody like to respond to the comments about AB 339? It's Item 35 on the consent agenda. Where's Thomas? Oh, there he is. Okay. She said you were incorrect.
Yes. She did.
How do you feel about that?
I have some prepared comments, but all in all, the crux behind AB 339 is that it's mandating your board to choose Option A or B, whether that's telephonic or internet-based service. If your board chooses not to choose or to elect to do telephonic, you're forced to do internet-based service. So saying that we're wrong about that is, I think, incorrect. We do have options, but our options are forced by the state, so...
Yes, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I would also like to make one comment in that your board already has in place remote testimony available in three outlying areas that were discussed by Ms. De La Rosa. We have Ridgecrest, we have Lake Isabella, and we have Mojave. So those three sites have been used for more than a decade by residents in outlying areas when items that concern them come before the board. We have a process in place, and they apply online to use that capability, and we also use it for planning commission.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Mr. Alsop, did you want to jump in there?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I appreciate Thomas waiting in the wings back there. Appreciate that, Thomas. Yeah, this is a state-mandated proposal. I'm not going to add anything. I think Ms. Kraus has addressed some of the things I wanted to add. The only thing I would add would be that, given the extraordinary impacts of policy decisions of the state legislature, it may be a good idea for them to apply this to themselves, so that we all here living in Kern County have an opportunity to participate in state hearings, legislative committee hearings, et cetera, instead of getting in a car and having to drive five hours up there, both, you know, five hours back, maybe rent a hotel if you don't want to have it 10 hours in the car every day. I would only say it might be good to apply it to themselves.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Supervisor Perez?
Thank you so much, Chair. I assume that means your recommendation has not changed.
Yeah, we join the California State Association of Counties in recommending that you oppose this bill.
Which is CSAC.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I hope that provides some clarity for the commenters. Thank you.
Thank you. So seeing no other comments, is there a motion on staff's recommendation or on the consent agenda? Excuse me.
So moved.
Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. Four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Scribner.
He will now consider Item Number 1, Public Presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter not on this agenda but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. Also, the board may take action to direct the staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Speakers are limited to two minutes. Please state and spell your name before making your presentation. Madam Clerk, is there anybody waiting on the telephonic system to address the board?
No, sir. We do not have anyone waiting.
Okay, thank you. Anybody in the audience that would like to speak, this would be the time to do so.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Yeseedra Osby, and I am the 5th District Park and Rent Commissioner. And I am here to talk to you guys about Proposition 68, the per capita funding of $1.47 million has been allocated for Kern County. As the Chair of the Parks and Rent Commission, I was confused about this per capita funding initially because of the presentations that were shown for various parks throughout Kern County. But now that I have clarified the per capita funding and the use of it, I have recently found out that there has been no application submitted, and the plan for the $1.47 million has been placed for Hart Park, which none of District 5 community can get there very easily. It is my recommendation that the board, that the five districts split the $1.47 equally between this $1.7 million because it allocates the necessary means for getting the repairs for our local parks in District 5 especially. We have parks that has not had any crucial maintenance for our community residents to benefit from, and particularly Castleoma Park. Castleoma Park was last updated well over 10 years ago. The families... The families cannot benefit from lighting. They can't benefit from updated toys for their children, and it's just terrible that they have to go elsewhere, like their backyards or the streets, to try to get some recreation. So please consider this when in discussion with General Services for this Prop 68 funding.
Thank you. I believe Supervisor Perez had commented.
Thank you very much. Good to see you, Commissioner. Have you taken this issue up with your colleagues on your board? Is this something you guys have been talking about? And is there some consensus? You know, I would love to talk to you about the issue in more detail, but I'm certainly curious as to where your commission is and, you know, how they feel about these matters because I'm sure they involve a lot of detail that we're not privy to, that I would like to know more about, certainly. So I'm going to ask Ryan, while we are not agendized on this matter, what is the appropriate way to proceed here? Because I don't want to miss an opportunity, and I don't want to neglect what has been raised by my own appointment.
Chairman Peters, Supervisor Perez, I believe that our staff spends quite a bit of time talking with the Parks Commission about our plans with the parks. Ms. Osby mentioned Hart Park, certainly Hart Park. Looking at Mr. Hill back there, if he's got anything to add. I'm happy to bring back an item to talk to your board in open session about all of our plans with parks and funding.
I appreciate that. Chair, would you indulge me, please, Yoseja, if you wouldn't mind? Jeff, would you come down, please, and help shed some light on this matter as I am not an expert on these details? Thank you so much.
Yes, Jeffrey Hill, Chief General Services Officer. We have made several presentations to the Parks and Rec Commission specifically with regard to this allocation of per capita grant. The, we have not made a proposal to the state to receive the grants yet. We actually have done the RFP to get the, to get the design consultants specifically for children's play, children's play areas. In fact, at 3 o'clock, I've got a meeting where we're going to vet those RFPs. We will then produce a scope of work, a more clearly defined scope of work as the basis, and a budget as the basis of the proposal for that Prop 68 per capita grant. That's where we're at with the process.
Okay.
We have discussed it. I said, as I said, we've made several presentations to the Parks and Rec Commission with regard to this strategy and this project and that location.
Got it. So, okay, that's, thank you. That's helpful. So what we have here essentially is a disagreement about how to spend the money, which, of course, happens all the time, so that's okay. But is that what we're talking, is that what the issue is here?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Can we meet about this, Jeff, and talk about it? I'd really like to flesh this out and understand the issues better. I don't understand them right now, but I sure would like to because this seems very important, and I'd like to reach some middle ground and figure out where we're at. That's my appointment, and I trust her. And when she brings an issue to me, I have to take that very seriously. And, you know, usually, it takes a little bit of us getting on the same page and working through some of our disagreements, which are normal and to be expected. So I'm okay with that. I just want to get on the same page, Jeff. So if you could make some time to come see me, I'd really appreciate it. Yoseja, I look forward to seeing you, too, and thank you for bringing this matter to our attention. Chair, thank you for your indulgence. CAO, thank you. Jeff, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak during public presentations?
I have a question about the last.
Oh, Supervisor Couch. Sorry, I didn't see what was in there.
Mr. Hill, you could probably help me. Supervisor Perez brought up a, in answering her question, I thought you said that you had done the RFP, and it was out, you were waiting for responses? Is that correct?
We've received responses. We're evaluating them to issue a contract.
You're, so if you're evaluating the responses on the scope of work, then is it safe to say that the decision to spend the money has already been made? Because the scope of work is going to be what to do at Hart Park.
The decision to spend the money, basically to make the allocation, will actually come to your board again. This is only for design RFP to produce the, to produce the submittal documents. We will have to come back to your board with a resolution, committing any funds that are necessary to complete the job or match. That will come back to your board, and then the design drawings will come to your board and the contract.
But are these consultants going to work on anything other than designing something at Hart Park?
Supervisor Couch through to the chair, no. This will, they'll only be working on, this RFP is for this project and this current scope.
And it will take, talk to me about Prop 68 in a little bit larger sense. What I'm hearing you say is that you're going to focus this per capita funding program or component of Prop 68 on Hart Park.
Correct.
What are the other components of Prop 68 that won't be focused on Hart Park? That might be focused elsewhere?
There's five proposals, resubmittals that we're going to make for five community parks. I don't have them committed to memory, but five additional proposals, resubmittals. We submitted them once, weren't granted, but we're hopeful, especially with bringing our grant consultant on to review and change our proposals. We'll be making five more.
This is the sausage making, so I'm not.
This is sausage.
I have not asked you any of these questions previously. Are there, is there a particular reason that you can give that says, you know, it's best that we apply for these funds for Hart Park through this particular program?
Yes.
Or is, can you outline that for members of the public?
Yeah, Supervisor Couch through to the chair. I think that the root of this is a disagreement over the sausage making, if you will, as you pointed out, and how to fund projects that we're trying to get done. Obviously, we have a Hart Park master plan. That is a regional park that's used by lots of people all over the place on weekends, from the fifth, from all districts, really. And so you have that. We've got about nearly $40 million in grant requests through Prop 68 out right now for a variety of different parks. Those have been submitted, I believe, to the state, and we're waiting to hear. Those parks, I'm just trying to think, some of those parks, Mojave Heritage. Jeff, would help me out? There are quite a few. Virginia, I believe, may be in there.
Yeah, the list is Heritage Park, Virginia Park, Potomac, Lamont, and Mojave East are the five parks that we're submitting proposals for, between $6 and $8 million per proposal.
And I, currently, if I'm wrong, did we hear back and we were not successful on the Lamont Park?
In the first phase, correct.
First phase. This is where we.
This is another attempt?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Supervisor Maggard, did you want to jump in there?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hill, how long has the process been ongoing that's led to the culmination of now trying to designate funding for the project at Hart Park?
For this project?
Mm-hmm.
It's, we've discussed it for over a year.
And to what extent would you say Hart Park is indeed regional and services particularly all districts that are in the greater Bakersfield area?
I think it's a heavily-used regional park that gets, that gets traffic from all over the county and parts outside of the county.
Yeah. Okay. I support the request, the way it's been put together and the way it's been processed through the Parks and Rec Commission. And I'm certainly open to differences of opinion, but I fully support the use of the funds because they will benefit not any specific district. They'll benefit all districts. And if you spend a weekend at Hart Park on a Saturday or Sunday afternoon, or any evening, you will see that it is a very, very diversely-used facility by people from all over the greater Bakersfield area. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Perez.
Thank you. Supervisor Maggard, you raise a great point about lots of uses. I know lots of folks from my district use the park. That is true. I think it's also true about other parks in the area. David, to your point about Buena Vista and other areas. So the question, as I hear it posed to us now, is, why is the entirety of the money going in one place? And why don't we give or have an apparent perspective of fairness in the distribution of the funds? That's what I'm hearing. Not knowing more, I don't think this is the place to flesh this out. Again, I'd like to meet Jeff and David, maybe with both of us, just so we all can wrap our heads around this stuff better. The lines of funding are always confusing, and as you know, this business is as much about perception as reality. And so here, I think we've got to be a little sensitive about how we manage the perception, and I think those are very, very fair questions, and that we should give an answer to the public for. So I look forward to help fleshing that out and frankly, understanding it better myself. Dave, thanks for your questions. I think we could really get some more clarity and, you know, as we continue to prioritize our parks and be creative about lots of pockets of money, you know, the more sort of streamlined we are and on the same page about when to strike, you know, obviously, it's not a perfectly egalitarian system. None is. But, you know, if we're communicating, at least, you know, we have a greater perception of fairness and inclusion in that decision-making process. I think there's some of that. So again, I appreciate all the comments, but I look forward to fleshing it out a little more. Again, thank you all for your help there.
Thank you, Supervisor. Is there anybody else in attendance that would like to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Eddie Lane. I appreciate this opportunity. I want to discuss this exact issue for capita funds. This $1.47 million is the only non-competitive parks funding available to Kern County through Proposition 68. The Sierra Club has consistently advocated these funds be prorated among the five supervisory districts. $280,000 wouldn't build a new park, but would provide playground equipment upgrades. State staff indicated the paperwork process would not be difficult. The recent letter that I've sent, provided to you, is clear. These funds are intended for use in economically disadvantaged neighborhoods. A new board resolution is needed. Staff had incorrectly indicated that this is a settled issue, and the entire amount would be allocated to one park, Hart Park, plus $294,000 in matching Kern County general funds because Hart Park is not located in a disadvantaged census tract. Communities and neighborhoods from around Kern County, as well as your Parks Commission, need an opportunity to make recommendations regarding these funds. With $1 million in community development funds and $615,000 in Kern County general funds already committed to upgrades, Kern County is getting attention. In addition, the Kern County, the Parkway Foundation is partnering with Kern County to develop an application for new state regional parks funding, which is targeted for interpretive centers. The issue is not taking funding away from Hart Park. The visioning process for Hart Park for the now outdated master plan was specific to that park and not all parks in Kern County. The issue is a fair distribution of these funds to economically disadvantaged neighborhoods according to state guidance. Hart Park is indeed Kern County's gem. It is being polished. Potential gems in other supervisory districts need some polishing, too. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. We have our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Thank you again for the opportunity. So I'm here to urge the Board of Supervisors to direct staff to apply for the Prop 68 per capita funding and distribute funds equitably for all five districts. The program allocation for the county is $1,473,000, and these funds are not competitive at all. As soon as the county applies for it, you receive the funding. And in addition, I'm not sure if staff said this or not. I don't think I heard it, but should the money be used in a, in a area that is not disadvantaged, then the county needs to provide 20% match. So is that money going to come from the Parkway Foundation if it's going to be used for Hart Park? Is my question. And again, how Eddie just mentioned, the funding is designed to go to economically disadvantaged communities. If you apply for the, for parks in economically disadvantaged communities, you do not need to include the 20% match. Okay? So there is the benefit, and it's important to talk about that. I do want to highlight and bring special attention to Casa Loma Park. Residents have called and stayed for various hours during the Parks and Rec Commission meetings to inform staff that there are no lights. The park is completely dark. I encourage you all to go out and check it out. There is no lighting at all. That is a public safety issue, and I know the board is very attentive to those issues. And one way that the Sheriff's Department and Police Department love to talk about crime prevention is through lighting and environmental prevention. How are we going to talk about crime prevention if there are no lights? The county needs to provide, needs to provide those lights, whether it be from per capita funding or maybe American Rescue Plan funding, but the park needs lights. The issue is that the vandalism is what leads to the, to breaking lights. Then I encourage the county staff to find innovative ways to figure out how the, how the lights can stay there without any type of vandalism. I hear Potomac Park has a really good system for the lighting. So again, I want to bring attention to the per capita funds to distribute equitably and bring lights to Casa Loma Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers under public presentations? Any more questions or comments from the board?
I appreciate the conversation and my commissioner coming forward and being so engaged in the process. You know, disagreements are inevitable in this business, and it's why, you know, we compete and, you know, fight for funding. It's the nature of the business. So it's okay. The tension, I think, creates good conversations, and we learn, and we figure out how to compromise, hopefully. So I appreciate the conversation, and I appreciate learning quite a bit today and being helpful in reaching some resolution moving forward. So really, thank you so much. I appreciate the conversation.
Thank you. We'll now consider item number two, board member announcements or reports. Are there any comments from the board? Supervisor Perez?
My apologies this morning when I made a very heartfelt thank you regarding our vaccination clinic last Thursday. I failed to mention the coalition, which includes the Lawrence Swirte Foundation as well as BHC, Building Healthy Communities. They are, of course, very proud of that work and are working very hard. I neglected to mention them. My apologies for not mentioning that coalition and really, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. The Lawrence Swirte, Building Healthy Communities, your 10-year anniversary this year. I know you've been at this a while and deserve much gratitude for so, for doing so. But really, thank you again, and my apologies.
Are there any other board announcements or reports?
Well, I have a question about the last item. Just want to clean that up just a little bit.
Sure.
We're not taking any action today, but based on what Mr. Hill said, that he's going to go in a few minutes to go in a few minutes and talk or review RFP submittals, whatever you call them, I think it's important that you, Mr. Allsop, our CAO, bring back the report that you talked about, and a broader look at how we're utilizing Prop 68 funds, what our plans are across the county, sooner rather than later. Can you do that, are you able, are you able to do that by our next meeting?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. Through the Chair, Supervisor, I'll bring back, we'll present on all of the, I don't think there's been more investment in parks by a board in recent memory. Your board has prioritized parks, there's been a lot done, there is quite a bit of polishing, thank you Mr. Lane, that's been done. And I'd be very proud to come and talk to you about everything that's been done to date, and everything that's being planned, and how we're planning on funding all of that.
Thank you, and maybe we could, I don't mean to just me, we collectively, the board, not collectively, that's a violation of the Brown Act, individually, might talk to you before that, share our concerns, whatever those are. So, you're able to address those when you come back. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or reports from the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll now consider item number 14, under the Public Works Department, protest hearing on the proposed confirmation of costs incurred for nuisance abatement work located at 613 Columbus Avenue in Lake Isabella. And with that, we'll receive public comment on this.
Good afternoon, gentlemen of the chamber, ladies of the chamber. My name's Ted Nelson, I'm representing my mother. They should be here anytime, but they're, I guess they're looking for parking or something, so. I have two, two ways we can go about this. I would like to pass these to each one of the chairs, and, and there's one for this Now, if I have two ideas of how about this can go around, see if you like one of them. One of them is you guys want to take a few minutes and go over that, so we don't have to go page by page with me, but please do read the content, because the court, it goes with the page. And most of these are pictures, it's not all writing, so it may look like quite a few pages, but a lot of it you're going to thumb through. So, would you like to do that? And then I have my two managers, or however you guys do it, to speak on their behalf after you're done.
You know, we can take a look at them right now, but if you wanted to tell us what your concerns were and...
Two of us want to do one way, and two of us want to do it the other way.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just lead it then.
Okay.
Okay, look at, thank you guys, and gals, very much. We're in blue tab section, okay? This is a first known burnt pics of the burnt down double-wide mobile home, showing the roof and some half a wall standing from the burned debris. You can see that if you turn the page real quick. See the roof crushed there and the walls, okay? Also in this photo, there is no travel trailer, or motor home, I mean, or mobile home, okay? And then the pre, this is pre-inbation shot between, before the Shibata family started, or the county's contractor started, okay? In this photo, you can see two burnt vehicles also, that's going to come in later. So, you can see the two vehicles on the bottom picture, okay? Okay, the orange tab, we're going to orange tab. First picture shows of when, when the trailer was put on the property, and the date was 8/20/2020, okay? You can see it there clearly. We couldn't, they couldn't even move it in, because there was so much debris, they had to clean all that out first, take to the dump. So, that was a big cleanup effort, just to get that to sit there. And on the top photo, you can also see the walls from our cleanup. If you notice, the walls are gone, the roof is gone, all that burnt stuff all around, the old found, the old metals, okay? That holes the trailer, the frame, the metal frame. Okay. Also, in this mobile home, mobile home trailer, we have a list of tools that were inside at the same time. That's where we stored our stuff, and we could go in there and have a cold drink, and it was set up on the property, just to be set up to store our stuff, and, and I'm not going to say that wasn't going to be used later, I'll tell you this later on. But, there was a 9,000 watt generator, two, four shovels, four rigs, two wheel barrels, two skill saws, there was two cutoff wheels, grinding wheels, igloo ice chest, brand new, and two saw blades and diamond blades, 300 feet of extension cords, and air conditioning, and a sawzall with all blades. That was the merchandise, that was inside when it was taken, okay? And you can see that where there goes a picture. Okay, we're over that. To yellow tab, the Shibata family did the abatement of the top, you can see some of the frame, platform of the mobile home. Okay, same, same picture basically, but we're showing you the detail of it, okay? There was lots of debris, some of the frame is gone. You can tell by the gap in between the edge and where the platform is. You see the edge where that piece of platform sticking up? You see that gap in between the edge and where that pile is? That's a lot of cleanup in between. So, the bottom photo shows that that whole frame kit is gone, and it's just a pile of rubble, if you notice in the picture below. And this was only taken one month apart. So, between that one month, we really got a lot of that stuff out of there. You can tell by the pile and the standing. Okay, the pile that was left there after taking all that down, the frame, the structure, everything, it was a 12-foot by 3-foot high pile, photo dated 9/14/20. That's less than a month, as I explained. What was left for the county, the contractor of Kern, their contractor, was a pile, a pile, and the back part of the frame, the section closest to the street, you see where your sign is posted, if you turn to the picture, the frame is the closest to the street. That's a lot of stuff gone. We did a lot of that frame pickup. That's all I wanted to tell you, it's a section close to the street that they did get. Okay, check out other pages. One is the platform, period, getting, started to get tore down after we took the walls and the roof. Okay, and these are their pictures, by the way, I want to remind the chamber that these are all photographs from the county that I'm using. And then the bottom one, you can see the motor home. And there's another pile we put before they cleaned, this is ripping off half of the front of the trailer. You can see that file there, okay? This is the red section. At the top of the photo, were the two separate vehicles with clearly marked red tags. This is within 72 hours, as per law. This means the vehicles will be towed and disposed of, that date, that date on the fellow, on the photos. So, way past 72 hours, they waited, they both were burnt down to the ground, so they were less than $500. They took those, okay? That's good. Sheet two and three is the order from the, this agency, a public, a public agency authorizing to dispose of the two burnt sedans. These are literally the DMV papers. I'll get back to some, I don't know who that officer is, I guess the officer's name is, or his number is 114, okay? Whoever signed that off. I can't, I can't read his signature. And then the second one, same thing, 114, burnt sedan, right on the top, clearly less worth than $500. The third one, they have, they called RV, it's really a travel trailer or a mobile home. We'll get into the difference later, an RV you can drive, and you could go camping, and you could go see different parts of the United States, whatever. But a mobile home, you have to pull, or a trailer, travel trailer, you have to pull. And that can be set up as a home, really, a house. Okay, so sheet four is the RV sheet. It's definitely worth over $500, we got that. There is no pictures of red tags or anything that says they're going to dispose of that. In fact, the time they put red tags, the, the travel trailer or mobile home wasn't even on the property yet. So, they came 6/24 and took their photographs, and then all of a sudden, out of the middle, they dated both these the same as the other date, but there's no red tags or anything showing proof of why are you, why are you taking our, our motor, mobile home? And so, that was one of the things, it's clearly over $500. Remember, we estimated last time I was here, we're talking $7,000, $8,000. And someone could live in that thing if they got it set up right. Okay, so, and then the tools that are in there. So, it should have never been taken off our property, that's, that's the end of that, really. Okay, green section. Photos from 613 property after county's abatement contractor. You can see debris, permanent foundation, which should have been abated, bathtub, full blocks of foundation block, hold down blocks, and some burnt wood material from the fire. You can see, if we go to that page, turn the page to the picture. The upper photo, to the right, there's a bathtub, there's a bunch of construction debris. There's another pile over there, to the left, there's a pile with a lot of, a lot of blocks that hold the, the mobile home up for permanent foundation. And then we have another set of debris right in front of us, right in front of that, right behind that sign. So, that was their cleanup, and, okay, sheet two, sheet two, this is the original, you probably need to turn to this, the original email from the real estate agent. And he clearly states, as I mentioned numerous occasions, you need to clear the lot before the seller will accept the property, and it can close escrow. So, that stuff they left is holding the sale up besides this $14,000 issue we're going to talk about. So, right there, and then we have several pictures, if you just glance through, and this is the pictures of what's on the land still, that they left, they didn't take, maybe, maybe they were going to send someone back in a truck, and it just never happened, you know? I don't know. So, those are photographs, if you can please go through those real quick. And then we got our pink section. She wanted to, okay, this, this is a closer seller statement, okay, estimated from Chicago Title Company. We can go down, there's the $10,000 that we could sell it for right now, that's what it's worth, that could be sold, it's already, it's already in progress. Depending on what happens today, it's going to go through, or it's not. And as you see, we have at the bottom, I make a marking of $6,910 is what would be all the fees and the back tax owed. Now, we didn't know this, but mom wasn't paying back taxes for a while, and you guys got a bill coming for $3,760.19. Okay, so, if and when this sale goes through, your money will be right off the top. The Kern County's going to get their money right off the top. Excluding the $14,519.20 for the substandard property fees, all escrow fees and back taxes come to approximately $6,910, okay? This will be paid first if escrow closes. Now, my proposal that I'm bringing you, and my mom and sister are still trying to make it here, you've met, you've met my mom out in the audience last time we were here. Can you guys please take a moment and read this proposal to each of yourselves, and we can come back and talk about it? It's very important.
I appreciate it, I actually have read through it as well as listening to you, but once you get into your presentation, I'd like to give Pope a chance to respond as well.
Okay, for sure.
Thank you.
Did you, did you read the back page, or do I got to read it with you?
Yeah, I did read it.
That's the whole proposal that we're offering?
Correct. Mr. Pope or Mr. Anam, would you guys like to respond?
Thank you Mr. Chairman. I'll ask that our county clerk, our clerk of the board, please put up the first slide, we're just going to give a good clear picture. It's the same photos that he used, because they came from our report. This is exactly why we have code enforcement. We have an issue on private property, this doesn't belong to the county, which constitute a public nuisance, it is either a health hazard, safety hazard. The owner is either unable to or unwilling to remedy the situation. This has been going on for over a year. We'd much rather have the property owner go do this. Every time we touch one of these, it costs the taxpayers money. We, we put liens on, we do everything we can, but I'm going to say, in general, we get about a third of the money that we spend doing this type of work. There have been a couple of things that are in contention. One is the trailer, not the first trailer, that one right there is burned. He evidently moved another trailer onto the property, and we did have it towed away, right there.
Yep.
Look at the date on the notice, do you have a date on that picture?
6/24.
6/24.
6/24.
Okay. That was brought about not because of the initial concerns we had. If you look at our initial notice and orders, it didn't include that. He moved it onto the property, and we had people living in it.
That.
Woman, couple kids, we got testimony from one of the neighbors that said somebody's moved in, no power, no water, no sewage. So, all of a sudden, it itself becomes part of the nuisance that we need to abate. That's why we moved a step further. He indicated that the trailer had a number of tools in it, things that he'd been using on the job site, very possibly could have. What we have testimony from, the person that picked it up, was when they go haul a vehicle, first thing they do is a walk around, look inside, make sure there's not somebody in there, that type of thing. And they looked inside, and he reports back that there were no tools. The door was open, and there were no tools. Could have been, I mean, no doubt about it.
Say that again?
It's from Golden Empire Towing, the company we hired to go do it. Gave testimony that there were no tools within it when he hauled the vehicle.
Really?
We did not do this.
Really?
And we, I like to say, again, we have testimony of people living in it. The trailer then became part of the nuisance we needed to abate, that's why we moved into We take it very seriously, working on private property. Highest Public Works Director, am used to dealing with roads, landfills, things that belong to us. Because it is private property, we have a lot of laws, which we follow. We have, we try and be very fair to the property owners, because they are not used to dealing in our world. We believe we have done that. The costs that incurred by the work we did was what we bid out, that's why we bid it out. There's no question then of the cost. It's the lowest we could get the work done at that point in time. This took a full year to bring about. There are a lot of neighbors and whatnot, they complained. It's, we moved a little bit slower because he was making progress. We'd hoped that he would abate the issue. Didn't get it done, we moved ahead. The price that we bid, the price incurred, was after the work he had done, and all that was already, it's not like there was a bid, then he did work. It was a bid, and they went to work. So, Mr. Chairman, at this point, we're prepared to go into any details you would like to, or in all the steps that we took to get to this point, look to your board for direction.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Sir, my, my heart goes out to you, that is a tough situation to be in. I, I really, you know, really regret that you guys are in this position. But, as Mr. Pope said, you know, this was something that had been going on for over a year, that they were working, trying to make contact to try and get resolved, and it's not something that they, they wanted to, wanted to do, that is done lightly, and it went to bid, they tried to get what they could, as far as services up there. And ultimately, even though it's really a regrettable situation, and it's very unfortunate, ultimately have to trust that our county employees are doing what they do in the best interest of the county. And so, again, my heart goes out to you, but that being said, I'm going to make a motion on staff's recommendation, since this is in my area.
Say so before you do.
Sure.
Okay. I feel is, is when that thing first went, and all the stuff we got off, we did two-thirds of the labor, okay? And we were doing it in increments, as you see through the photos, things are missing, things are getting cleaned up, it's getting smaller and smaller and smaller as a pile. So, that doesn't mean we were sitting on our laurels.
Right.
Now, what this does mean is though, we have a truck, and some, most of the time a trailer, sometimes we couldn't borrow, so we just brought the truck. And this is a, three, three boys and one girl family that were trying to get this done. My little brother works at the mortuary over there in Wolford Heights. So he's working, you know, five days a week. So we did everything we could do and we kept doing it. Now, that motor home, there was no one living in there, if you want to say, I don't know how long. This mobile home has tools in it. My little brother told me, there's a compressor, there's rakes, there's a skill saws. There was everything in that thing. And if you read the proposal, here's what I'm asking. We're asking to expunge the $14,519, okay? Here's the first reason. Kern County subcontractors cleaned up the parcel. They left piles of permanent foundation blocks, hold down blocks, and bathtub full of debris with burnt wood, et cetera. Okay? And now, if need be for this to happen for me and the sale, I will go up personally with my truck and borrow a trailer and move all those debris that's still up there, that the contractor hired from the county left. So I will agree to go up there if this thing works out the way I'm hoping. Second, too, the travel trailer was not put on the property till a year later, after the fire. It was used for secure tools, ice chests, cooling shade, and to take brakes and stuff while working. Okay? Doesn't matter, doesn't mean maybe my little brother didn't take a nap there and sleep there so we can get started the next morning. I'm not saying that. But it's not fit for human because we don't have the inspections for septic tank, foundation, earthquake straps, electrical. We got to get all that. Our plan was, after we got to clean our lot ourselves, is to move that mobile home in the middle of the property and get all those inspections so it's properly livable. And my little brother was going to have him, his wife, and his daughter. It's a two-bedroom, it'd be perfect for a little family. And so apparently, that can't happen right now. Let me see, second, the travel trailer was estimated seven to eight thousand dollars in value. So the $500 or less for the DMV requirement is way out. Okay, that's no good. So that form, plus not having a red tag picture on that form that they showed you, the forms I did, I forgot what thing. You guys saw the forms. And the form had one for the RV, they call it, the same day written as that other one, as if there was a red tag put on at the same time they did the cars. There was none. That thing should have never been touched. Okay, his planned plan was to finish cleaning the property, move the trailer to the center of the property, get all inspections done by the county, earthquake straps, everything, I just explained that. This is the reason we bought the trailer in the first place, because of the destruction and fire of my mom's home. Okay, Code Compliance did more, if they did more research on the travel trailers, realized what put there a year later after the fire and is not part of the tow and salvage part of that thing, okay? They should have never signed the DMV form unless they took more look. Oh, wait a minute, man, we can't do, that wasn't in the fire. It's not causing a nuisance. And they were cleaning up, trying to get the debris cleaned up. As you see from all the pictures in progression, these are your guys' pictures. So, I got disinformation from you. And so, look, we worked really hard, very hard to claim that property with just a truck and tools. And a trailer. Sometimes we cannot get the trailer, but we still worked with the truck. I feel two-thirds of the property was cleared by our family, the Shabata family. We were worked on and after the fire, you're talking, look, a year, a year and a half, two years. We've been working on that thing, believe me. And I feel we finished two-thirds of it. If somebody else was on my team or someone neutral could have went out there, they would have saw, oh, wait a minute, man, you only got this and this to do. Okay, you're raking one hell of, you know, excuse my language, $14,000. I would have did it for three. Okay, so with all due respect, chamber, this is still our land, the Columbus land. And there's no one should have taken what, taken our belongings, the travel trailer and tools. This is where, in or on the property, that was ours. That was our stuff. Just because there was a burnt down mobile home and just because there's stuff there that we're using for storage, that was our property, man. You guys didn't, there's no lien on it yet, it's a pending lien right now. So at the time, there's nothing that says you can take this off the property. I think even the United States, the United States President would have a hard time. Wait a minute, man, we can't take that, that's not ours. So, they never had a red tag on the vehicle for every two-hour notice, just like they had the red tags on the fire on the cars. And then the value is definitely not less, worth less than $500. And I will question on that, if you want to pull that up. Sure? Right, go down one? Right there. You see that unface, do not enter? Do not enter for personal sleeping, bathing, anything. It can't be, do not enter for storage for tools and ice chests. That's not, the whole thing was written, those forms are so people get inspections. Water inspection, electrical inspections, foundation inspections, earthquake straps, permanent foundations. That's what that's for, so I researched that, sir. So with the expungement of the $14,519 from the property, from you guys' cleanup, please grant us this expungement. It's ethical, moral, and just proper thing to do for an average family of Kern County. The sale is an escrow as we speak. If it stops, the deal current issues at hand, it stops until we handle the current issues at hand. Okay, so, we have the buyers, Mike and Charlotte. Okay, the next one is the escrow fees, I read that to you. This is unforeseen fees to finish escrows, a thousand dollars. So basically, property taxes owed, which will get to you guys right after escrow closes or during. You guys will get paid your $3,760 in back taxes. The remainder, that adds up to $6,910.56. The remainder should and will, if you let this go through, get about $1,900. My mom lived by herself, she was very independent. She probably lacks, didn't pay some taxes. And so I was thinking with this money, we can buy her bedroom set because she did have to move with my sister, buy her new bedroom set. This is the last place she's going to be before she passes away. Because, you know, who knows how long it's going to be? She's 74 and she's not doing the best. So, thanks for all your consideration you gave us and to the Shabata family. Our family line, just so you know, we've been out in Lake Isabella, Kernville, Wolford Heights, and Little Kern for over, in the 60s. That's how long our family goes back. There's, so I have cousins up here now, they all seem to go this way. I don't know why, but they do, it's wonderful for camping and stuff. But, very sincerely, I believe this should be expunged and we can go on with the sale. You guys will get your tax money. I lost, we lost almost nine grand, if you want to call it that. You guys lost 14, it was a bad move in the whole place. So we were doing our stuff diligently. And I guess there's nothing more I can say except for thank you. And please, please, give us some consideration before you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, it's a difficult situation and my heart really does go out to you. And if you guys want to contact my office, I'd be happy to help point you guys toward any resources that we can to help you guys deal with some of these issues. But ultimately, those are still taxpayer dollars that the county expended after trying to deal with this for more than a year. So, again, I'm very sorry for the situation you've been put in. But my motion is going to be to approve the staff's recommendation. Supervisor Couch?
I just want to, there was a lot that was said there. And I want to know if the staff has any responses that they need to, feel like you need to put on the record.
Through the chair to Supervisor Couch. I think the facts are before you. His mobile trailer that he brought in for a workshop, it was, it's not zoned to do that. There were people living in it. It became part of the problem, not the solution, as far as we're concerned. We have it tagged at one point to be moved. I believe that we followed the law correctly. I believe that we gave them ample time to remediate the problem. And like I said before, we're thrilled when they do work. We'd love to have them do the whole thing. It just stalled out, as far as we could tell.
Is there even a legal option for this expungement that he's requesting? As far as I know, there is not, but I'm willing to ask that question.
I don't know if there is or not. We could turn to council and see what they have to say.
It's my understanding, once the work has been done and he disputes that they did the work or not, I get that. But once the work has been done and we've paid someone for the work...
Supervisor Couch, through the chair. You're correct, and I'm not certain of the use of the word expungement. That's not something that we would usually use in this setting. However, Deputy Brian Van Wyk is here and he has been working with Code Compliance. And if I could ask him to weigh in, he'd probably have more precise information.
Sir, there's a...
Yes, sir.
There's a county attorney sneaking up behind you.
Hi, good afternoon Supervisor Couch, through the chair. So, how I would say to think about this is, in terms of what is being discussed as an expungement here, it's really a request for relief. There's nothing to expunge yet. What's attached to the property right now is a notice of substandard condition. There's no lien yet. What the department is asking your board for today is an order that the money would be due. And if not paid, then it would become a lien. So there is nothing to expunge at this point in time. It's best understood as a request for relief.
Okay, and if we move on the motion, how long do they have to pay that?
It would be, I believe that it's 30 days after the order. I'm sorry, it's 10 days after the order.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Maggard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When the property is sold and whatever equity there is paid to the county to reimburse the county and the taxpayers for the money that they spent, isn't that where it ends? There is no lien against them as personal, on a personal basis. They're not in servitude to the county. The remainder of the cost to the county will go unpaid, is that not correct? Or is there, do they have an obligation beyond that? What leverage do we have to force them to go into a payment agreement with us? Couldn't they just walk away?
Brian, do you know that? Because I know it is a lien on the property, but I'm not sure if it then follows them.
So once the property is sold, sir, can he come back to the microphone? Could you step back, please? Could you step back, please, so the attorney can speak to us?
Oh, I didn't see what I saw.
Yeah, no problem.
So, it would become a lien on the property. That's the leverage the county would have in this situation.
Isn't the property being sold?
My understanding is that the property is in escrow right now, but it has not been sold.
So once the property is sold, the matter is closed. They don't have an obligation to pay any other funds to the county after that, do they?
At that point, the matter would become a personal lien. And the county does actually have obligations to collect that.
How does that work?
Our county tax collector's office can attach the assets of a person in certain circumstances. This being one of them.
Or are there remedies we have at our disposal where we can stop that process from proceeding once the property is sold? Do we have the option, if we were to choose it, not to go after them personally for it?
Your board does have the opportunity to grant relief to property owners. That said, historically, that's only been in exceptional cases.
Yeah, this is a bit exceptional, I think. There are other options. It seems to me that his remedy at the end, he wants some, was it $2,900 to buy some furniture for his mom to move into a family member's house. There are other options, if there are no funds left in escrow. There are other options that we might be able to connect them to CityServe, churches in the area. There are many very generous opportunities to help somebody in a dire circumstance like this. So, maybe there are other ways that you can help them.
That was my thinking on that.
Yeah, okay, good. Don't me to step on your way there.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Where's Harris? We do not have a second. Oh, I... Okay, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Skrieger?
And, sir, you can get my contact information if you want to contact my office after this hearing or this week. And we can try and help get some resources, put you in touch with people that might be able to help out and some other ways to help you guys with this and deal with this issue.
The land's going to be seized? When the lien goes on, how does that work?
The county is moving forward with the recommendation that staff provided.
Tax?
Is, that staff provided.
Mr. Chairman, Kenny?
Yes, sir.
What I would recommend you do is speak to that gentleman right there. He will walk you through the entire process and all of your options.
Okay.
That is the best, I promise you.
Okay, so your vote was, go ahead and keep the $14,000 and take my mom's land, and that's it?
Unfortunately, like I said, that's the route that the county goes with this when we've been trying to deal with it for a while. And they're going to help walk you through that process.
Can we try to have them investigate? You know that mobile home did not get destroyed, somebody's using it. It's a really nice mobile home. That's why I don't understand, the fee for the DMV was $500 or left scrap metal. This wasn't $500 left scrap piece of metal. This thing was a 36-foot mobile home.
I understand, sir, but they...
So how does that...
If you talk to Mr. Anon or Mr. Pope, they'll walk you through that and give you that information.
Thank you, Chairman and ladies.
Mr. Supervisor? May I ask a question of Mr. Pope that's related to a matter? I remember 12 Mr. Pope was withdrawn from the agenda this morning by staff, or this afternoon by staff. Could you stick around afterwards and walk me through why that was the case? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, having no additional items to consider, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn to Tuesday, June 22 at 9:00 a.m. With that objection, we're adjourned.